Commission meeting to order. Can you start with the roll call, Chloe?
Yes. Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilk?
Here.
Chair Welch?
Here.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, well, it's time for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Very good. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications, cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T Uver-- actually, it's not on AT&amp;T U-verse, but we're working on it. Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter, Channel 71, and Comcast, Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. And just as a reminder for the one or two of you in the audience, if you would turn your cellphones to vibrate or silence, that would be awesome. And if you do get up to speak, we have a sign-in sheet for you to sign in, so we know who you are for the records. And with that, we'll move on to-- where we at, oral communications? Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, this evening we'll be asking for a continuation of Item 5A due to not having a quorum of unconflicted planning commissioners.
Yeah, conflicted, that's kind of an interesting term. That'd be hard not to have conflicted commissioners. Okay, so Item 5A. Anybody in the public that would like to talk about something that's not on tonight's agenda? We'll give you a few minutes if it's not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move it back. Any commissioner comments?
I've got a question about 5A. So if there's a-- if you own a business right next to the property in question, do you have to accuse yourself for that?
If you--
Just a resident.
If you have a financial interest-- so if you own the business next to it, or you own the building next to it, then you would have a financial-- if you're an employee of a business that's close by, but there's no-- we went through and talked with our attorney about Commissioner Christensen's scenario of being within the distance, but because she isn't an owner of the business, she is able to vote on this. And for fairness to the applicant, it's best to continue-- we actually have to continue the item because we do have three commissioners who could vote on this. And therefore, because of Commissioner Christensen not being available tonight, it has to be continued to the next hearing.
Well, since it's a conflict.
Peter Wilk, Commissioner Wilk. Due to proximity of his house. Yeah, so--
Okay, very good. Any commissioner comments? Oh, yeah, or staff comments? No staff comments? Okay, so we're looking at Item 3, approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes. One from our special meeting on February 7th that followed our regular meeting.
Move approval. Again.
Approve on the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So tonight, we're moving to Item 4. On our consent counter, we have one item, 510 El Salto. With the consent counter, we approve everything on the consent counter with one motion, unless somebody would like to remove that-- one of those items off of the consent counter. Is there anybody on the planning commission that would like to discuss or remove? Anybody in the audience that would like to remove the item off the consent counter? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. You're welcome to go, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay as well.
Yeah, that's finding this quite interesting.
You're glutton for punishment, aren't you?
So that moves us to the public hearings, and we just heard that Item 5A for 01 Capitola has been continued. And so we'll move to Item B, the update to our zoning code.
I think we-- did you make a motion on 401 Capitol Avenue to continue it? I think we'll need to do that.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion to continue Item 5A, 401 Capitol Avenue.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Very good, thank you, Katie. Okay, now we can move to Item 5B, the update to the zoning code.
Okay, thank you. We're going to continue from our last-- the special meeting that we had regarding the zoning code update and the LCP implementation. Just as a quick review, your local coastal program is made up of your land use plan, which has long-term policies, and it's also tied to your land use map, the general plan land use map. And then your implementation plan, which is made up of the zoning code, the zoning map, and the municipal code. So as we go through tonight, we'll be talking about the zoning code, and we'll actually reference the land use map. As I was working through some edits that the Coastal Commission-- after our last meeting, they reached out to me and said, "Katie, after reviewing your-- the changes that you did not want to accept in my notes on the sidebars of the zoning code, we have about 15 items we'd like you to reconsider and possibly accept." So within Attachment A, it was the list of planning commissioners requested items. I also added the Coastal Commission staff items. So this evening, I'm going to go through-- I've numbered the items that I think are worth discussing. Some of these, if there were any that you'd like to talk about, we can talk about them, but I just added what I think the simple fix is.
Okay.
But I'll be going through all the numbered ones, and I think there's about 20. I'll try to go quickly through the minor items, and then those that we need to spend some time on and discuss and figure out what the right solution is, we'll take the time to do that. So one item that we will be talking about is the land use map, which is the general plan map and how it fits within the land use plan, but we'll wait till we get there. So-- actually, I guess we're here. It's the first item.
So could you-- I'm sorry. So you're just doing the numbered ones. I looked at the very first edit, and I thought you'd explain that, what's going on there?
Sure. So the very first edit is under the-- on page 2-04 of the code, it lists which chapters are applicable under the implementation plan of the LCP. And they'd like me to review-- to remove Chapter 17.12 permit application-- or Chapter 17.112 permit application. That was where it listed what the-- so if you open your binder--
We don't have that.
We don't have that in our binder.
Yes, ours starts at 4.
Our first page is 04-1.
Oh, you know, I think I was a little dyslexic in that. I think it's 04-02, I apologize.
Okay.
It lists the local coastal program implementation plan, and under B1B, it says chapters, and it includes 17.112 permit application and review. And they'd like me to remove that. And with that, they wouldn't-- they don't want that reference because it opens up a lot of other items to the LCP. So-- but what that means is that we have to keep, like, the appeal procedures and permit application procedures in 17.44.
So basically, you're saying it's kind of redundant?
It's a way of not including-- it will be redundant. We're going to, in 17.44, have redundant language that is tied to 17.112, but 112 will not be part of the LCP implementation plan.
Okay.
Anything that's in the IP, they have review over anytime it changes. So if they ask us to remove something from the IP, we're typically happy to do so. So-- okay, moving on to--
So are we going to have a motion on this whole thing? Or how's this work? What are we going to be asked to do here?
I think as we go through these, any changes that are requested, I'm going to put them in a summary form. So following this meeting, I'll be putting all of your recommendations from the last hearing and this hearing into a summary of what I took away from the planning commission. And we can make a motion this evening, and when you adopt the minutes, my summary will be in the minutes of those two meetings. And if I got anything wrong, we can change it at that point. So tonight, you can make a motion. If there's anything that comes up that's controversial, we'll actually have a vote on any items. But otherwise, I'll assume for one like that that you're okay with the staff recommendation.
So would the final product go on the consent calendar at the next meeting?
It would be in the minutes. When we were doing the zoning code update, I always had a table that would go in the minutes of what came out of the planning commission meeting. So I planned to do that for the April meeting.
So once we agree to this, or we approve the final edits, then it goes back to the Coastal Commission. When do we hear back with their final?
So actually, next it goes to city council. So I'll be taking the summary that I put together with-- that will be reflected in the minutes to the city council, I think, April 11th.
Okay.
Is my plan of, if we get through everything tonight. And then we'll submit to the Coastal Commission, and I believe they have to put us on an agenda within three months.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so on to number one. When the Coastal Commission staff on page-- this is 12-1 and 12-2-- had requested that we reference the land use plan under general plan slash land use plan. And I pushed back on that because the general plan really-- this is for our base zoning districts and how they relate to the general plan. And what they'd like to see is-- I'll go back to this slide-- is our land use map that's in our general plan is also the land use--
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so our general plan land use map is also within the land use plan, the coastal land use map. So with their-- in talking through this, they would like us to reference that zoning districts are based on the general plan, which in coastal areas also-- the general plan land use map, which in coastal areas is the coastal land use map under the land use plan. So it's pretty confusing, but I've-- I found a solution. I've worked with the Coastal Commission, and they're okay with it. So this would tie us back to 17.04, so the first chapter, under that section that we were just under. So if you go to 1704010, relationship to the local coastal program--
Right.
Under A, it gives a very high general statement. I'd like to add B, that the local coastal program land use plan is a comprehensive, long-term plan and land use-- for land use and physical development within the city's coastal zone. And that's the document at the end of our zoning code that was in your binders. It consists of proposed policies and recommendations for land use in the coastal zone consistent with the coastal act. It includes the coastal land use plan map, which is the certified general plan land use map for areas within the coastal zone. So just referencing it back to-- they want a reference to the map, and I'm trying to clarify where the map-- what map it is. And it's really the general plan land use.
You know, with all due respect, there's a sad reality to this, which is-- I mean, one of the objectives of codes and laws is that people can understand them and that they're reasonably accessible to the public and they're user-friendly. And it's not our fault, but with the Coastal Commission overlays on this and the back and forth and the-- and the intricacies, we're really losing that goal big time. And I tell you, take this thing out on the street and ask any citizen what the heck they should do in a situation, and they won't have a clue. You know, I think we've, we've kind of lost sight of that somewhere. I don't know what the solution to that is, but if anybody disagrees with me, I'd like to hear their argument.
I thought maybe it was just me, but I told Katie, I go, this, this is complicated stuff, when you start trying to reference all these different tools and...
Too many cross-references and...
They're trying to tie everything together, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the first, my first comment was, well, wait a minute, I'm looking at the land use plan, and the maps there don't even reference the zones. And so, like, why is the Coastal Commission suddenly in our short zone, our zones? I, I don't know, yeah, it was very confusing to me.
A citizen should be able to, without hiring a lawyer, figure out something about his property, or property.
I was looking at the general plan from 1972, a few weeks ago. Charles Delkan Associates did it when I first got on the council. It's about this thick.
I mean, I don't know what the solution is, I just throw that out, it's just, it strikes me, so...
So, um, I, I did keep, that was kind of the impetus behind this, is they were throwing in, um, references to something that isn't explained anywhere. So by adding this, it at least explains the reference. And then, I still think that under chapter 12, we shouldn't accept their modifications of adding those items to the tables, but simply restate base zoning districts. We can, we could not take that suggestion of the reiteration. So then I also have the edit at the bottom for 1712020A. If you go to page 12-1, right now it says base zoning districts. Capital is divided into zoning districts that implement the general plan land use map as shown in table 17.12-1. We could add to that, the underlined last sentence, within the coastal zone, the general plan land use map is the certified local coastal land use plan map, or we can just simply leave that out and just have the reference to it on the first chapter.
I guess I'm having trouble understanding what their goal was in terms of referencing the land use plan in our base zoning districts, since the land use maps that they have don't have any references to their zoning districts. What are they trying to get at?
Control.
No, but what, but what control? I mean, what...
So they, they do have control over, um, the city is required to have a land use plan, um, in which it, it consists of the long-term policies for implementation within our zone. So, it's almost like the general plan of the coastal area, and in doing this update, we decided not to update the land use plan at the same time as the general plan. We move forward with the zoning code update, but that would, would have been a great second step for having two long-term policies for the coastal area and the general plan. So, so this is very much in their interest of saying, okay, Capitola can make decisions over anything that happens in the coastal plan because they have an update, they have a land use plan and an implementation plan, so, um, I think the, the first reference...
So are you suggesting that, nevertheless, to remove the slash land use plan from table 17121?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason is, is because they really, uh, that you can weasel-work your way around it, for lack of a better...
Yeah, we'll have a clear reference of how our general plan also acts as our, our general plan land use map acts as our coastal land use map in the first chapter, although it definitely seems like overkill, but you know, it's helpful for...
So, just bear with me. So, the land use plan, if it was updated and to be complete, it would have a map in it that mirrored the general plan. Therefore, you could, the slash would be okay because the maps were identical.
So the land use plan does have a map, and it's called the general plan land use map slash coastal land use map. And it exists, it's from 1991, I believe, and anytime there's been an update to our general plan, uh, land use map, that's been certified, on this map, they have a reference to that certification. After our general plan was updated, we should have certified our general plan land use map, and we did not, so we're going to take that step when we update the zoning code and the zoning map. So this will clearly reference how they all tie together. I do think the suggestion of my underline under chapter 12 is probably overkill, and we could remove that as well. But just to have, have that section under B1, I think is helpful for us getting this adopted.
Okay, and they're, and they're good with your suggestion?
Is there a B2?
Well, there's currently a B2.
There is, B2 would be the implementation plan and the reference to the LCP IP.
And so, like you say, they're, they're good with this suggestion?
They are. I, I've emailed them back and forth. So, would you like me to remove the, the second reference to it under that last paragraph?
If you think it won't cause any controversy with the Coastal Commission...
It'll make them happy if it's in there, but...
Yeah, they get another reference.
I, I, I have no opinion.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me, I don't care about that other sometimes.
Is this really 17.040?
17.0410.
17.04, oh, oh, 03, 040, sorry.
It's 040, not 02.
040B.
04 what?
040B.
Yes.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, let me start, okay. It's 17.04.040, that should not say 010, 040, and it's the relationship to the coastal program. So the general statement will stay, and then B will be local coastal program land use plan. Okay? And I'm not hearing to take out the second reference, so I'll keep it in.
That's fine.
Okay. Next is Cliffwood Heights side yard setbacks. This was in respect to recent application. Cliffwood Heights has much larger, wider lots than typical lots in Capitola. At the time that it was developed, the setback standards were different. When we brought forth an application recently, we found that, I want to say, over 90% of the lots along the street were non-conforming to side yard setbacks. So for this modification, um, it's building in an allowance for the existing home. The Planning Commission may approve a reduction to the side yard setback for the existing structure to be reduced to the existing setback of the built structure, but in no case less than three feet from the property line, and that any addition or new development must comply with the setback standards of the zone.
So I have a question about that. When we handled that, I sort of remember that Cliffwood Heights application, was the new code in effect yet?
Um, not there.
Okay, so, once the new code went into effect, I think the problem went away, because it only applies when there's some sort of expansion of the property. I mean, the house is already there.
So the, the new code has a standard of, um, once you hit 50%, and I know, Matt, you looked at this very closely, if you know it off the top of your head, you're welcome to.
So then on before he makes you subject to the 80% calculation currently, um, all these houses are way under the maximum floor area ratio they would be allowed if they were conforming. Um, and then under the new code, it actually drops it from 80% to 50% improvement limit, so it's actually more, more restrictive under the new code.
And I, I do think that was possibly a change that happened at the, um...
The non-conforming rule under the new code is basically that you can, as long as you don't expand into, uh, and make it, expand the non-conforming aspect of it, you can make improvements to the property.
So that's how it was originally drafted, and at some point towards the end, there was a standard of, um...
Based on what?
I want to say 50%. It may have been at the City Council review, but, but it did change...
It's a footnote under the development standards table, so it's not actually in the table, it says, you know, like, um, super script number two, and you go down to the bottom, so it's in this little fine print underneath the table, and it's 50%. I wish I had the code on.
Code here? Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember us doing that.
No, we didn't, definitely didn't do that, the way we passed it, and I didn't realize it had been changed, was, you know, it's a big topic of discussion on the non-conforming, so when they go by 50%, what are they going by? Floor area, uh, building costs?
We got rid of the valuation, so it has to be the FAR.
So when we, we did review the, that application under the new code, and we found this, um, the fact that there was this 50% limit tied to it, that it wouldn't have helped the, the owner with their development. So, I'm gonna, I'll pull it up under...
Because while you're doing that, I'll, I'll just say my, I don't like the idea of the City Council passing a zoning rule for a particular area that is contrary to the way a lot of the existing properties are in the area, and then saying that, well, let's have another rule that says that that, that ordinance doesn't apply very much here, because there are a lot of areas that we could do that. How about the front yard setbacks on Warf Road, for example? You know, almost all the houses don't...
Rear yard setbacks in the jewel box.
So, I mean, we should have that all over the place, if, you know, automatic variances, if your neighbors, uh, it's just a bad policy to go to, I think, to take one area and say, the City Council, in its wisdom, decided to change the zoning in that area. And this is like undoing that in an awkward way, in my opinion.
What do you think about the proposed language, the addition, the Planning Commission may approve a reduction? Still have the same concern?
So, should we do the same thing on Warf Road, though?
So, so how does that work with, so, the Planning Commission makes recommendations, the City Council modifies them, Planning Commission doesn't like the modifications, so what, they're like the Supreme Court, you guys, you're stuck with it.
Yeah. So now we're going back and trying to, uh, gerrymander the decision they made?
Well, so, if we're, if we're trying to get the zoning code completed, that was just started in 2010 with your general plan, back when you were in law school... Shouldn't we just not fight that battle now and just accept what they'll accept and try to get the Coastal Commission on board, and then go back and fight these battles one by one?
Well, yeah, well, no, we're not trying to undo what they did, they're, we're just, I mean, the proposal here is to, to make kind of like a, you know, a one-area exception, that's what I think is not a good idea. I think we'd be more consistent just to say, leave it, leave it the way it is.
Or strike the whole thing.
And we still have the discretion...
They have to require variance.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there should be any special Cliffwood Heights rule.
So where did that rule, I'm sorry, where did that rule, did the City Council not put that rule in?
No, no, we're suggesting it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, I agree with you.
No, the City Council, it was the 50%, uh, that, that's a part I don't remember, but...
The trouble is the City Council, when they deals with these issues, it's in the midst of like 10 different things they have to do at their meetings, whereas this is all we do.
Yeah.
So are we, are we in agreement that we don't even like this paragraph?
I was gonna say, what if we strike the whole paragraph?
That's what I think.
Okay, is that, so I, I'm definitely going to come back to with the non-conforming changes. I, I can tell you that under, um, I don't know if you want me to get into the weeds on this, or if, if it's just bad policy at this point to adopt a specific...
Yeah, I think, you know, forget the Cliffwood Heights exception, we can all go back and look at that non-conforming thing and try and sort it out at another time.
Okay, let's do that. So, strike. And just as a... Where I have seen this before is for historic homes, where you'd have a blanket exception like this. That's a good, good place to utilize them, I think.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, um, special rule for historic homes, but I don't like taking an area and saying that...
It should fall under the very regular variance features.
Yeah.
Okay, next. Um, this was the, the question posed by Commissioner Ruth of the density limits versus the floor area ratio, and I'm gonna do my best to give you a scenario.
Well, you know, it was just, it was just a question, because I know I voted to do this at the last meeting.
Yep.
And, uh, then this question arose in my mind, just what would be the difference in the, in the development potential for, like, say, the AAA buildings site?
Yeah, so the very simple answer to this would be, on the AAA site, within the, if you meet the setback requirements and the height requirements and the parking requirement, if it's tied simply to floor area ratio with no density, you could break that building up into more, into smaller pieces and get a higher density, but you're gonna have to park it, and that's gonna be your challenge. By keeping the density limit in there, there's a specific density limit of, we had proposed, it was in there, as 20 units...
Whatever the CC is.
Per acre, and under that, in that scenario, 20 units per acre ended up being 52 units on that site. So, um, I think there's, some developers might like that assurance of they know the number of what their maximum density is. Parking 52 units on that site with a parking requirement in multifamily of 2.5 spaces per unit would be a, a challenge. I also wanted to just remind you on this site, when we did the zoning code update, and this was one of the final changes that took place at the end of the zoning code update, but it was a really good change of, because of the sensitivity of this location and where it is, and, um, next to residential, there were additional regulations tied to it that, um, on this side, that, you know, it's a community commercial parcel, there's a maximum height of 35, maximum, a minimum rear yard setback of 40, which is a lot greater than typical setbacks in this area for CC, and that there's an enhanced application review. So if you go beyond two stories, it would require a conceptual review at Planning Commission and City Council, also a community workshop, and then it also requires, um, City Council approval of the project. So, and then there's a bunch of findings that have to be made for any project along that south side of Capitola Road. And if you'd like, I can walk you through exactly what the development perimeters are, but that was the big thing, that you could get a, a more dense project with smaller units.
Now that answers my questions thoroughly, thank you.
Would anyone like to see a change to that proposal of taking out the dwelling units? Okay. Okay, next, um...
I think that's in there because...
There was a, an edit, and this one, I'm actually, I'll bring up the New Brighton property within the visitors' serving. The city does not have review over New Brighton. The Coastal Commission is, um, has actually sent me an updated email as of today on this, and they're saying because it would be part of our LCP, and because the LCP acts as the local authority over the state's, the state's ability to regulate, um, within the city, that they would like us to keep this in there, because it's their way of regulating, the state can regulate the state. I, I do not think we should move forward with that change. If they have, if they want to weigh in on each other's projects, that's just fine, we will. Any development project would need a CDP, a coastal development permit, but to have development regulations, I don't think is good practice, is us being the police of state property.
Frankly, I think the less interference the Coastal Commission has with state parks and its handling of its properties, the better. We're paying both of these agencies to fight with each other about these things, like when they, you know, with the river and, uh, Seacliff and, uh, you know.
This is a battle we want to fight, though.
No, we're not, we're just telling them.
No, but I, yeah, I agree, I don't think we need to be involved in their...
No, but they want, so, so they want to leave that column in there, and you saying it's a bad idea, but...
Yeah, but it's not our battle.
And I have our city attorney reviewing the email that I got today, so...
We can say no, we'll see what happens.
Yep. Okay, next is, this is a review from our last meeting, in talking with the Coastal Yep. Okay. Next is, this is a review from our last meeting. In talking with the coastal commission again, they suggested for the, for the Monarch Cove Inn parcel, to change the language, I have it on the slide, "Single-family dwellings allowed only," prior it said, "if ancillary to visitor accommodations," and they were willing to change that to "in conjunction with," so it doesn't have to be secondary to visitor accommodations. And then I thought it would be, meet the purposes of the coastal commission and our residents, if we modified that further to say, "allowed only in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or grant of public coastal access." So should they subdivide this in the future and make the single-family home a single-family home again? They would have to, within the subdivision, grant public access to a view, a coastal view. So-
So this is why I wish they were here, because I, I have a couple of questions, and I, I'm way over my pay grade. I'm like my distinguished commissioner to the right here. I'm not an attorney, and so, but looking at what has been going on with the coastal commission and the challenges on this very specific thing, I don't know that we have to give them anything, and I don't think we should. It's private property, and so I, I would, I would like to ask the coastal commission some very specific things, based on lawsuits that the coastal commission has been involved in, which they've lost, on this very specific item. And in fact, I should share with, well, maybe I'll give it to you, and we could get it distributed, some of these lawsuits that have taken place, and this is within the last year, about this very item, forcing private property owners to, to give up rights for public access. And so there's some very substantial cases that's been upheld through the Supreme Court on this, and I, for one, am not willing to, you know, give up pri, private owner rights to, to the coastal commission. I mean, they, obviously, I don't have a say in it. They can fight this if they want, but I wish they were here, because I have some very specific questions. One is Nolan versus the coastal commission, but there's, there's some very specific lawsuits that have been upheld, that said, "If they're gonna do that, then they have to pay for that property." So I don't know how we're gonna make that happen. I think there's some view shed areas that they could probably get some agreement to, on that little road that comes behind them, but I, personally, I'm not willing to, to make it the responsibility of Monarch Cove to grant access to the public.
I, I will add that I spoke with the property owner today, and they liked this suggestion. They thought it was a good way to still allow visitor use at the site, so that visitors could take in the view, without requiring their homes to be visitor accommodations. So they're in favor of it moving forward with this language, but I-
Well, my, my thing is, we, we grant it there, then where do we grant it next? And who's next on the list to say, "You have to grant access"? And it's, you know, my understanding, it's not on our current map for view sheds, and because of, that's one of the stated lawsuit issues, is if it's not already in the current land use or map for the view shed, then it doesn't have to be in the future, and so-
Isn't it, it's, it's zone visitors' serving, and they-
That's fine. We, we made that as a-
Public access, visitors.
No, the zone is R1 with a visitor's serving overlay, and what they want us to do is make sure they always have that visitor's serving. What the property owners at one time would like to do is, is make it R1, and just have it as a private residence, but I don't know. I would defer to my-
I, I agree with your general principle. What the staff's condition here is, is to take what the coastal commission wants to do, and give the property owner another option besides that. So it's making it a little bit easier for the property owner. They can either comply with what the coastal commission's wanting in the first place, which is in conjunction, maybe have a rent-out part of it to, on a daily basis, or they can grant some kind of pathway to, to the coast. So it gives them another choice, but I agree that they shouldn't be requiring that, the coastal commission. I don't know if that's, again, if that's a big battle for-
It is, it is a big battle, but I, to me, it looks like this battle's been settled in court several times, and so I, I, you know what, I, it's, they're the owners currently, but, and I don't wanna have to fight their battle, but, and this is why I think it's above my pay grade. We're, we're in this position of fighting the battles for these people, right? I honestly believe that this should be more, I guess, I think maybe we should have some public comment meetings and community meetings to talk about something, because this is, has some far-reaching impact. So if they agree to this, and then they sell the property, now it's part of the deed? Is it the next property owners? And, and so who's next on this process that says, "No, you have to grant this to be open to the public"? I, I just have some strong concerns, and I, I wish the coastal commission was here, because I have some specific questions about some of these court cases that they've lost, and how they stand on, how, how they view that. So. I had an opportunity to talk today to the planner from San Clemente, and they just finished their, their land use policy and plan after four years of negotiations, and it, it was pretty eye-opening. I have a lot of information here from lawsuits and stuff that they went through, and this is one of those areas that they try to hold tight on, is not giving up these, these rights. In fact, the city had their own properties that they owned. So I, I just see as you're letting the foot in the door, and, you know, you, you, everyone knows my opinion on private property and ownership. I just don't wanna give them anything, any access to it, and I don't think they have a right to it, to be honest with you.
If you go to page 38 of the land use program, the land use plan?
Page 38?
Page 38, and it's a map of shoreline access. The very end of your binder.
Right.
So not in the zoning code, it's in the actual land use plan? Page 38 is a map of shoreline access, and there is this, I'm sorry, I can't put it up on the slides, but right here, a picture of an-
The view, that little V, which says a view?
Within, yeah, that's supposed to be a V, and it's close to the proximity of that parcel. So I think you could, they could tie us back to the land use plan on this one, to say that, and when you read the description of these parcels and the protected views, this is mentioned within the-
So I, I guess I would go back to the, did, did the property owners have due process when this happened, or? This is just hand-drawn in there, so how did, how did this, it's not in the view shed, but I see now you have it in the shoreline access. It doesn't have it in our other map about the views?
What does that V mean?
So on the key, it says "view."
View.
Yeah, but I mean, what does that mean in terms of who has what rights?
Yeah. So I guess this one, it's-
So where the Escalona Drive kinda curves around and goes up, it's a dirt road up there right now. I, I, I think, you know, there may be some open to allow a view property there, but on the private property of their, where their parcel is, I, I just, personally, I can't buy into that.
So your suggestion would be that we just keep the zoning the way we had it, which is visitor's serving or slash residential?
R1, yeah.
Let me, let me ask a question. If we made a very subtle change, and made the word dwelling plural, dwellings, what impact would that have?
Right now, I, I impose, I impose single-family dwelling, because that's how it's listed in the, in the land use table. I think at that point, I mean, you're only allowed to have one single-family dwelling per lot in the, in the R1. That would be an R1.
But that, isn't there a lot big enough to subdivide?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
It is, yeah. So each-
And when this came through, when this, when this came through, Ed, you were still on the, you were here when we had this discussion, right? Because there was a potential buyer for the property at one time, that wanted to subdivide the property, and that was a big push to make it zone R1 and get away from the visitor-
Because the neighbors didn't want that.
The neighbors didn't want the 42-room hotel there.
Yeah, Monarch Cove.
Yeah. So we, we designated, we and the city council allowed this R1 for that possibility at some point to make it more than one single-family dwelling. It's a large lot. Why would they not have the same right that anybody else has up there with over 4,000 square feet?
I mean, we, your, your motion tonight could be to just simply not have note 12, you know, and just-
Easy way out.
That, you know, unless, and then it'll probably come back to us. So at this point, it's-
But maybe by then, we could have some honest dialogue with them about some of these lawsuits that are going on, how they got overturned in other areas, and, you know, that's my concern. And I think it's difficult to have these meetings without a representative here to have these discussions, to have that dialogue.
If you get into the litigation, that's been very luminous over the coastal commission, public access, it'll be really complicated. But the point I made last time is that this is really small fish for the coastal commission. They're talking about visitor serving of a unit, half, now, part of-
Look at Martin's Beach. That was a unit.
Well, the, that's a beach, yeah, yeah, that's an access. But I mean, when we've got the, a potential visitor-serving hotel that they're making more difficult to construct, so it's sort of like, a sense of proportion isn't there, in my view. They're fighting a small battle.
So let me try to get a handle on this. So TJ, your objection is that this is private property, and, and it's, they should be able to do what they want. But Katie's point is that, well, it's clearly in the land use plan, maybe vague, but there is precedent that says-
Clearly is not a term I would use, but-
The V is clear to me. I can see it, right there.
But it doesn't say what that V means.
So it doesn't, so I'm not saying that that, what it means is clear. I'm just saying that, that there is reference to a general area there, that, that should be a view shed, view shed. So your, your notion of, well, this is a slippery slope, and so if it's, you know, this property, what about the next property? Well, this is the property that has the V close to it, so that's, this would be unique to this one.
Right.
So from that standpoint, the notion of, okay, let's just add Katie's note, which is, well, if they are gonna go ahead and develop it, they at least have to have the view shed. I'm not sure what's wrong with that, other than, other than if they do wanna subdivide, that 'cause it's visitor-serving, they can't?
No, if they, with this note, they could subdivide, but there would have to be a grant of public coastal access, so an easement-
So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. That seems reasonable.
Maybe it's because you don't own the property.
But, but they bought the property, and-
No, they bought the property long before this was-
Oh, yeah, it's process.
And so, and the thing is, I don't know there's due process. So in, in 1987, the Nolan versus coastal commission, it states very clearly, if they wanna do that, they have to buy the easement. And I think there's still a workaround. I think that road where Escalona shows, at least that it goes up, it makes that curve, there could be a view access, but that's kind of behind their property. I hate to tie property owners to something that they had no control of not having to do process to put that little V on that map. I, I would almost guarantee they don't even know that little V's on that map. So, and I, and, and plus, when we use terms like "allowed only if in conjunction with visitor accommodation," yeah, I, I just, I just hate tying our hands, and like I said, I'm not a land use attorney, but it looks like there's certainly some precedence with the coastal commission having a problem with this and it, and it being overturned, so.
So to move this forward, I'm gonna suggest that we go with the staff's recommendation, because the, the current property owner seems okay with it, and it actually just expands the options beyond what the coastal commission was requesting. So, I mean, I-
And the coastal commission's okay with your change? I mean, you talked it through?
You know, they haven't seen the "or" grant of public coastal access, but they're, they're okay with-
That just gives the property owner more, more options, so.
So would you be willing to add an S to the dwelling to give them even more options?
Meaning?
That would impact beyond this property, though.
Right now, it says there's only one single-family dwelling allowed there, but the parcel's large enough for more than one, if they subdivided it.
But you just said that it wouldn't be a problem subdividing it, to be able to do that.
Does that mean every subdivision parcel has to allow visitor accommodation?
You could build like an ADU on it.
So you, under R1, you could build an ADU under it, as long as the parcel meets all our ADU standards. By listing single-family dwellings, it really steps away from what our definition of a single-family dwelling is, and it should be more of a multifamily under the-
So if it's subdivided, then that applies to each parcel?
So every parcel has to allow dwelling?
It has to allow access, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Or, I mean, that's, that's not clear, what if they-
We need to clarify that.
So that, see, that would be, why don't we just identify a place that is accommodating, and where that road goes up there, it has a view shed? Because where this picture's taken from is from the fence that allows you that ocean view. It's a pretty small, it's not a big ocean view from up there. I don't, it's not like you get this big expansive view, and so why we make that, hold them accountable to that, I, I just have a problem to it. And, and, you know, if they don't, more power to them, but.
How about "allowed," and I would cross out "only," "allowed in conjunction with visitor's, visitor accommodations," sorry, "allowed only in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or grant of public coastal access within a subdivision application?"
Yeah, if it was one place that was a common street or access where people would go, I, I think that's fine. But this is literally in the backyard. What are you gonna, if this is your private residence, and you wanna sit at, and look over at the ocean on your lounge chair in your bathing suit, does that mean people-
So her solution, because in subdivisions, there's all kinds of actions that you have to, you know, access to parks, you have to, I mean, it's all over the place.
But those are public ac, this is private property.
No, no, a private subdivision that you, the city requires you to provide pathway.
No, if it, it had a specific location, I don't have an issue with it. This location, if that was my property, I would hate to try to lounge out there in my bathing suit and have-
No, so this isn't, I think it's better not to, not to, it's tied to the property, to the Monarch Cove Inn property.
Right.
At this point, I think you'd want a future person who's gonna subdivide the lot to state exactly where the location is, and we just have to make sure it's a public coastal access, that there's actually a view. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you understand where we're going with it.
Yep. Okay, so cross out "only," so "allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or grant of public coastal access within a subdivision.
We're all the way to number four.
Steve, are you still interested?
Do you bring breakfast?
Just provide the coastal access to not be visitors.
Hmm, good point. Okay. So what if they choose not to subdivide? So maybe we just say, "or grant of a public coastal access to a view," like, or one.
I think that-
Just making it specific that there's only one, you're, they're not required, if they subdivide this in the future, to place one on each of the parcels, but there's-
Who, who actually owns that property where that road, does anybody know? Where that, I think it's already identified as a access area.
Which parts? At the end of Escalona there?
A, a portion of it is.
You know, behind the Monarch Cove, where that little dirt road goes up?
Yeah.
It's got a chain there?
Yeah, above the old stone house.
Right. Who, so I, I think that would be, but I don't know who owned, I don't know if that's private property.
Yeah, there's a, who's the house back there?
You mean the stone house? That's on the other side of-
There's the big house.
That's on the other side of the gulch.
And then they've got the little annexed stone house that's been there for decades.
But it's on this side of their gulch.
Yeah.
Do they own, do they own that roadway, too?
I don't know if they do or not.
I don't. Katie, on one of our maps we had, which there's many of- I don't, Katie, on one of our maps we had, which, there's many of them.
I think I have the language.
There's a little blue, okay, you have it?
Okay.
We're getting a feel.
Here we go. So, single-family dwelling allowed only, or allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or grant of public access to a viewpoint.
There you go.
It's a singular viewpoint.
You got my, you got my vote.
Moving right along.
Moving right along.
Sorry about that, Ed. It's, it's only gonna get worse.
All right, next is lighting, and this was brought up by Commissioner Welch, concerned that they've added too much, too many more regulations to lighting. And this is within the visitor-serving. So seventeen twenty-eight, twenty-eight dash six is the page for visitor-serving. Our standards are actually stricter under A. Our standards that are referenced under seventeen nine six one ten are, are strict when it comes to being shielded and applying to dark sky. We don't use such vague terms as dark sky technology. We tie it to a specific standard. So I think it's best to maybe not accept the changes under one and just, there's a clear reference to our, our lighting ordinance, and I'll point that out to them. But under B, they're asking for lighting of natural areas such as creeks, riparian areas, the beach, et cetera, shall be prohibited past the minimum amount that might be necessary for public safety purposes, except when temporarily permitted in conjunction with temporary events. So this was added by the Coastal Commission. I had added, when working with them at a staff level, the except when temporarily permitted in conjunction with temporary events, because we've got, we now have the light parade that happens on the river. But your thoughts?
I don't have a problem with that, but I, I want to know what dark skies, dark skies technology is, the latest.
There's standards for dark sky, and we reference them under a latter section of the code, under seventeen point nine six. But it's really so that you don't, you're not glaring light up at the sky, every
I thought that may be some weird technology that
Yeah, no, they're
Didn't know what that was.
I, I think our wording was fine, and I don't particularly care for adding their wording in item two, E2.
Do we, do we already limit the lighting of the creek?
Again, it goes back to
No, this is new. That, that section on the lighting of the creek.
So is there any reason why we'd want to have glaring lights on the creek?
Well, I don't know if we, I don't think we want glaring lights. I think our policy talks about lighting in general, about not being obtrusive. All exterior lighting shall be unobtrusive, downward directed. So I think that covers it.
But it seems to me that the Coastal Commission has a, has a right in their charter to worry about habitats and natural environmental
They can worry all they, they want, but the, the problem is, now they're getting into the property owner's rights of being able to have lighting, and what, what becomes beyond safe
No, it's not, it's lighting in natural areas.
Yeah. So all that, so how about Shadow Brook? Does that mean they can't light up around their building along the creek area? To what, to what extent?
I would wonder what they mean by natural areas. I would assume that, that means SoCal Creek, which is, which is defined pretty clearly where the natural habitat is, and I don't think it extends onto private property.
So on page ninety-six dash eleven of our code, we have light trespass, and it's specific that, it doesn't, it's not specific to the creek, but it's really specific to how much light trespass you're allowed to have. So lights shall be placed to direct downward and deflect light away from adjacent lots and public streets, and to prevent adverse interference with the normal operation and enjoyment of surrounding properties. Direct or sky-reflected glare from floodlights shall not be directed into any other parcel or street or onto any beach. That was added by the Coastal Commission. No light or activity may cast light exceeding one foot candle onto public streets with an illumination level measured at from the center line of the street, and then no lighter activity may cast light exceeding one half-foot candle onto a residentially zoned parcel. So there's no requirement prohibiting light on the, but you're supposed to keep everything down-directed and shielded and
Down-directed right onto the water. I mean, that's down-directed, but I don't think it's environmentally sound.
But you would have to have, put your lighting on there, over the water. I guess, I guess our pol, I think our code meets all intents and purposes of being friendly with your lighting and not being obtrusive.
Well, to other people, I'm just worried about the environmental effects. I'm not an environmentalist, but I would worry that you're upsetting the frogs or something.
Okay, so how about, how about the wharf that, our pier that's got lighting downward over the ocean? Is that not?
Well, okay, then you object to this words or onto any beach?
I object to the Coastal Commission telling us what to do at all. So, yeah, I, you know, it's not that you can't have lighting at the beach, it's, you understand that?
Yeah, I think we got that.
It's not that you can't have lighting on the beach, you want to have safe pathways. We have areas that have our beaches lit. I, alls I'm saying is, I think our, our code meets everything that needs to cover. I don't think we need to add their additional wording.
This does give us the ability, if somebody, a new owner moved in and started lighting up the, the, you know, SoCal Creek, and it was to an extent that it was obnoxious, that we could go out and we could hold them to this standard.
But our, our own code does the same thing. Because our own code is obtrusive to, yeah, it has to be downward. We could, we have ways to work around it. I just, hey, I'm just one vote up here, so you don't
Well, I will mention, though, that in the, the property lines for many of the homes along River View do extend into the middle of the creek. So when it says that the lighting has to stay on your property, this
I, I don't know that it bothers the fish in the, I mean, this is
We could get it, we could, we could send this to the environmental committee and have them rule on this.
Well, I don't know. I mean, this may be not the biggest battle, though, for in terms of
I just wrote that I'm against it. Doesn't mean I
No, that's fine.
I, I, I just hate to see the Coastal Commission get in our stuff here and tell us what our property owners can do along, the, the River View is, when I think about this part of the code, I think of those people who live along River View. It's a nice area, the creek's a nice area. I don't know that having lighting along your backyard that lights up part of the creek is obtrusive to the nature. I just
Well, we have a family home on the creek, and I don't think any of our family would want to see neighbors have lights out to the
And I'm totally on board with that, Mick. No, I'm a hundred percent on board with that, and I think our current code covers that. But if you're okay with it
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to see if you're alone on this, because I, I'm okay with E2 lighting in natural areas, the way it's worded.
Well, I'm, my thinking is, is that we're stuck with the Coastal Commission. I mean, we're, we're not in a position to basically revolt and secede from the state.
I, I understand that part.
You know, we have to try and work this out with them and fight the battles that are the most important.
I, I just don't agree to it. So I, I get that.
Why don't we do a roll call vote on this? So Peter, are you making
I think the easy, it's easy to say. I'm the one, I think the other three agree with this. I think you're
Okay, so keep as is.
Doesn't mean we don't sympathize with your views.
Hey, I don't live on that creek, so it doesn't matter to me, but it's, I, I try to sympathize with people who may want to light up their backyard.
Okay, the next was under seventeen point three six oh four oh. This was from Coastal Commission's staff. They would like us to keep the reference in here. So seventeen three six oh four oh. And this is under planned development and maximum intensity. It says the maximum permitted floor area ratio and residential density shall not exceed maximums established in the general plan. And they had or the local coastal program in the coastal zone for the applicable land use designations. I still feel that this should not be included in our update. Because our, our general plan establishes density limits.
Sounds, I agree.
Is there consensus?
Yep.
Yeah, we're good with that.
Okay. Okay, number seven. This is also for planned development. This was a comment that came from Planning Commission, Planning Commission. It's on page thirty-six dash five. And I believe this is one of the findings. So page thirty-six five. For planned developments located, oh, okay. So the Coastal Commission had asked us to put in a finding that if located in the coastal zone and subject to a coastal development permit, the proposed development will protect and enhance coastal resources. And I had switched it to must conform with the findings of the approval of a CDP. They both, the Planning Commissioner brought this up as well as Coastal Commission's staff. They would like it to say will protect and enhance coastal resources. And they made the argument that, you know, if a new development's going in and they're getting higher density, they should, it should protect and enhance coastal resources. And I said, well, if you look at our zoning map and you see what's been converted to PD over the years, I can tell you there's only been one PD that's located along, it's at the end of Escalona. And to require, this is a required finding for all PDs, it doesn't make sense to tie that into the required findings. So in working with them, their modification that they would be, would like to see amended to is for planned developments located adjacent, and I have this on the slide, for planned developments located adjacent to the coast, the proposed development will protect and/or enhance coastal resources and conform with the findings for approval of a CDP. So it'll either protect and/or enhance.
So Katie, the one thing I asked was for us to re-take another look at our word development in the glossary. I don't know if you had a chance to do that. The, our current definition says development means any human caused change to land that requires permit or approval from the city, which would mean landscaping, it would mean a lot of different, which to me, I think is too broad of a term.
Does that require permit, landscaping?
Sure.
It, it would only require permit if it's along the coastal bluff in an area of high hazard. I do have a slide towards the end for the, that.
Okay.
So this is really, it's the findings that are required when you develop a planned development. A planned development typically gets extra density within it and unique site layouts. So the Coastal Commission staff is saying that if, if they're receiving something, they should be given something if it's located along the coast.
So what's the point of stating that you have to conform with the findings for approval? I mean, isn't that always the case?
It is. It, that statement is repeated throughout this document, at, at their request. For every time we mention a coastal development permit. One reason, though, it's stated is they kept trying to insert these small findings that I kept saying to them, well, you have your findings for a coastal development permit in chapter forty-four, so let's reference those findings rather than insert additional findings everywhere. So we could either go with, in the white box was the original, you know, crossing out will protect and enhance coastal resources, but if it's in the coastal zone, it's gonna require coastal development permit and the findings need to be met. Or what they would like to see is at least holding the developer to a higher standard to either protect and/or enhance coastal resources, which is the new language.
But just adjacent to the coast?
Yeah, just if it's adjacent to the coast.
Well, you, you might convince me to leave in protect, but to enhance, when it says and enhance the coastal resources, then I
And/or.
Yeah, or is okay, and
Yeah, no, that's what it says, and/or.
Yeah, but the word and is what concerns me. Is there definite, are they gonna say, well, we want it to protect and enhance that coastal resource, so the enhancing part, I, I'm not a fan of that.
Well, and/or means you have an option. You can either protect it, or you can enhance it, either one.
If you protect it, maybe you're, I don't, I just, okay.
I think the or answers your question. Doesn't have to be and, or.
And doesn't answer my question. That's, you guys are good with this, fine. I just hate giving latitude.
Okay.
I'm all for protecting it, but I don't know that it becomes an obligation to enhance it. So does that, does that become a discussion when you apply for your permit? So that's my
Yeah, I mean, an example of enhancement would be, they often, I've seen them take funds during a development project to re, you know, replenish the sand of the beach and tie it to a development project. That's an enhancement of coastal resources, right, to ensure that your beach is going to continue to have sand as erosion takes place. So that, that's one, one example of where a development may need to
It's pretty vague terminology, but it's there.
You could read it to me. If I enhance it, it means I don't have
You don't have to protect it, right? What is that?
Okay, so we'll go with the, the new language?
Good with that.
That's good.
Yeah.
All right. The ninth one is interpretation of the coastal overlay zone. So I had suggested striking, this is on page forty-four dash two. I had suggested striking this language. Oh. Sorry, that is not page forty-four.
So
Sorry, I'm not finding the
Well, what the part I, so I was okay with, in achieving these purposes, this chapter shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the California Coastal Act and Article X, or ten of Section Four of the coastal, or the California Constitution. I'm not a big fan of the words shall be given the broadest interpretation possible so as to protect, restore, and enhance the coastal. Why don't we just meet the California Coastal Act and be done with it?
So what would you like the edit to be? I have the paragraph up there. This is, yeah, page forty-four two at the very top of the page. It's B.
I had just, in achieving these purposes, this chapter shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the California Coastal Act, Article Ten, Section Four of the Calif, California Constitution. The additional wording of, given the broadest interpretation possible is to protect, it's just, it's additional wording that
It's not additional, sorry.
It's in more latitude. What's that?
But it's already there, right? We're not adding those words. It says it currently states
Coastal Commission is trying to add it.
Well, so what does this mean? It currently states that the, shall be given the broadest interpretation. It doesn't currently state it?
No, this is what they're trying to add.
Well, I'm questioning Katie's note.
So I, I think I was stating what their edit currently states, because I wasn't quite sure what the requested edit was going to be. So that's what the code as with their edit, that's what their edit states, sorry. This is, it, it's, this was an addition by the Coastal Commission.
So I see your point.
Yeah, I'm okay with meeting the Coastal Act, obviously. I mean, that's, that is a code, like you say, we have to work with them, right? But why would we give them the flexibility of saying the broadest interpretation possible so as, we have to meet the Coastal Act, we, we'll meet that, but let the interpretation lie on between those people who want to have the discussion on whether it's an and or an or. Just my two cents.
So we do have a, a attorney on the council. Does broadest interpretation mean anything? Does broadest interpretation mean anything in legalese? I mean, I agree with Commissioner Welch. I think they're overreaching a bit with that language. It's not, it's not necessary, and it's sort of like they, you know, maybe they had too much coffee at that point.
So, "shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies"?
Yeah, that's, that's all they need. They don't have to get histrionic about it.
I think their attempt is to make it as vague as possible, so they have...
A lot of latitude.
A lot of latitude.
Right, when people come in for permits, right? Yeah, I mean, that would let them turn down anything, right? Let's look at our policy here.
Exactly.
Okay, under forty-four-seven, I think this was just, I needed to clarify. Under review authority, in the past, we haven't had the community development director having authority to make decisions, kind of like a zoning administrator. Under the new code, we do for design permits. And by building this into our code for coastal development permits that don't need any other, that are not appealable to the Coastal Commission and do not require any other discretionary approval by Planning Commission, the best example of this is an accessory dwelling unit. The Coastal Commission is going to require that we notice accessory dwelling units and that they're treated as, for review. And this would allow us to publish, that we're going, we'd send out notice to property owners and that they could request a public hearing, is the way it works within a design permit, for a certain amount of design changes. For a secondary NADU, they could request a hearing by the community development director. So, it's just creating this new level of approval for admin permits.
Yeah, I mean, that was my concern, and I didn't know that we already had a, we're starting to build in a zoning administrator function here.
Yeah.
But if we are and we have, we're willing to set that up.
Yep. So, and I think that's a really good improvement, so that we don't have to bring ADUs to the Planning Commission.
But then the staff has to get into the business of, you know, knowing how to conduct hearings, and you're taking on a new function there.
True, yeah.
Is it appeal, are those staff decisions appealable to the Planning Commission?
They are, yes. Next is forty-four, it's page forty-four-six, under development standards. So, this is another one that you could say is reaching, but this really builds in the ability of additional discretion for the Planning Commission. I think you have this discretion without it being written down, but under general development standards, it specifies all standards included with respect to height, setbacks, density, coverage, et cetera, shall be interpreted as maximums or minimums as applicable, that should be reduced or increased as applicable to protect and enhance coastal resources and meet LCPA objectives to the maximum extent feasible, depending on the facts presented. I talked through this one with the Coastal Commission. They wanted this whole, their revisions put back in. And then they, after reviewing it with me, they said, "Actually, the last sentence is redundant, and they'd be happy to have us remove that." But it's really just stating the obvious, that yes, when you have a discretionary permit, the Planning Commission has the ability to say, yes, that, you know, there's a height impact associated with this development, and although the zoning limit is thirty feet, we'd like to see you come down to twenty-seven because of specific reasons. So, I don't think keeping that second sentence is hurtful. It builds in the discretion, but I don't think it's necessary either.
So, could you give me an example of, so let's say, there's a, there's a house being built on the coast or something, and according to floor area ratio or setbacks, whatever, it's a certain size, then the Planning Commission would say, "Because it's near the coast, we're going to have, require a larger setback because we feel it's a coastal, it's a coastal protection issue," is that, we would do that?
So, the Planning Commission could say, if there were a view, say, as you're going up, as you're leaving town and looking back from the parking lots along Stockton, looking back, and one of the homes that was being built, we'll just for, just make up that they have a fifty-foot height. And if they were going to build this home to fifty feet and there's a public view, not a private view, a public view, the Planning Commission could say, you know, "Your height limit is fifty feet, but we'd like you to, you're moving our view of the war from this public viewpoint, and it should be decreased to this level to maintain the public view." That...
I don't really, that, what's that saying?
Yeah, this is just saying that you have the discretion.
It's not saying anything to me. I mean, it's, someone comes in, let's take floor area ratio. Their floor area ratio for the size of their lot is fifty-eight percent. That's it. I mean, coastal zone, not coastal zone. If they come in at fifty-seven percent, they're good. If they come in at fifty-nine percent, they're not good. That's nonsensical.
But I thought I was trying to understand what they're trying to say.
Yeah, yeah.
They're just trying to say that you have the discretion to...
To what? At fifty-seven percent, we can say they can't build it? No.
Well, because of other factors that...
That's a different issue, though.
Yeah, yeah, it's other standards.
What would those factors be, like a view shed or...
If it didn't meet the design, the findings of a design permit, or there was a circulation issue, maybe you'd say, "Well, you're, or you're not meeting your parking requirement." That they're maximums, it's stating...
You could say, "We shouldn't give a variance." That would make sense.
Yeah, my recommendation was to strike the last two sentences. The Coastal Commission would like to see the second sentence, that all standards, including with respect to height, setbacks, density, and coverage, kept in. So, "shall be interpreted as maximums that shall be reduced to protect or enhance coastal resources and meet LCP objectives to the maximum..."
I just think it leaves more room for more dialogue and interpretation that someone who has, as you mentioned, a right to a fifty-eight percent floor ratio, for someone to step in and say, "Well, you know, it's blocking a public view of the corner of the wharf or whatever it may be, and now we're, we're taking, once again, we're going past our..." That's what we have zoning codes for, is to protect those type of issues. And now they're trying to tell us how to interpret and follow through with our code, so I'm just...
It seems to me that they're giving the Planning Commission the opportunity to expand, like environmental habitat zones that are already zoned, and they say, "Well, but we'd like a little bit more creek width or something, and so we're not going to allow you to build on your property because we're going to encroach a little bit and make our parks a little bit bigger," or something. Yeah, I agree, this is an odd, I don't like that sentence at all, because they're talking about specific numerical standards and saying they should be interpreted...
Why does one property owner have a different set of standards next to another property owner?
Well, they could, we could say, you know, on the coast, your floor area ratio is ten percent.
But it's ten for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That, so, but we already have that established, so I just think it leaves more room for interpretation that doesn't need to be there, because it doesn't matter, either way, we have the discretion to allow a variance or to have a discussion about bringing your plan back for concerns we have.
Yeah, I agree. This just gives the property owner just confusion. It's like, wait a minute, I meet all the rules, but you can come in and say that those don't apply because you're too close to a view shed or a park, or, yeah, I don't like it.
It also appears this sentence allows, where it says, "minimums as applicable" or "increased," so...
Well, minimum parking standard.
Or height.
Yeah.
Or anything.
Yeah.
Maybe my next-door neighbor gets hammered by the Coastal Commission and only do one story, but I do really well with them and I get four stories.
So, I'm hearing consensus to delete, to keep it.
They need to rethink that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're just going to say that...
No.
The overlay zones are the same as the underlying base zones and end there.
Just say no.
What part of "no"?
Okay, this is, uh, page forty-four-seven and forty-four-eight, legal development and permitting process.
Oh, yeah, this is like...
So, I think Commissioner Welch had made comment on this.
Me?
The Coastal Act should be able, Chair Welch, should be able to repair, modify, or add if it meets the city zoning or building requirements.
Well, this, this, okay, so this has been challenged, and this whole, this goes back to this nineteen-seventy-seven date again, and I, this is being, has been challenged, and I don't know that we want, there's, I have a lot of concern about this whole wording. I know we weren't, wasn't going to get into the geological part, but this starts that whole process, so...
I would suggest we bump this up to our legal department for review and making sure that it's not giving them any more...
Well, so my discussions, and this is where San Clemente won, is they put it based on the date of their current LCP, which was two thousand eighteen, not retroactive to nineteen-seventy-seven. And their insight to me, when I called and had the discussion with them, was don't give them any dates historical that from that nineteen-seventy-seven. And they, they approved the plan with San Clemente with the date of two thousand eighteen, so... And the reason why is because San Clemente, just like Capitola, these properties were here long before the Coastal Commission was enacted. And so now, you're, you're trying to hold them accountable to something that they didn't have a discussion before they purchased the property for most of these.
Isn't your, is that your recommendation there, TJ, on the, on the paper here?
Is that my recommendation?
It's his comment in the center.
Because they both seem to see, say the same thing.
Yeah, so their, you know, Proposition Twenty took place first, and it was for properties within a thousand yards of the mean high tide, and then the Coastal Act of nineteen-seventy-six for all properties in the coastal zone.
Right.
And they're considered lawfully established development that does not require a coastal development permit in order to continue as legally existed prior to those dates. And then the standard, any additional development since those dates, including improvements, repair, modifications, and/or additions, may require a CDP in accordance with provisions to this chapter.
Yeah, I would, I would...
So, "may" is new, under "may require a CDP," is what I took from...
Our legal, our attorneys, we're using our city attorneys to review this? Or do we have a special, a contract with someone?
Our city attorney.
So, they're saying anything that was done prior to the Coastal Act coming into effect is fine, but then any additional development, so if I built something in nineteen-eighty-five, today, someone can tell me I didn't get a permit, a coastal permit?
Oh, if you built it in eighty-five without a permit, yes, yeah.
No, without a coastal development permit.
Right.
Right. I mean, not anything, so I think it should say "may require a CDP." If it were, if it were below the standards, like it was less than a ten percent addition or ten percent height increase, there are certain standards that you don't need a coastal development permit.
So, is this basically saying that things that violated the Coastal Act when they were built are, this is some kind of enforcement provision?
It is, yeah. As, another part of this is when new applications came, come in, they want documentation of how things were approved over the years. And this is definitely, the, the language here is setting it up for the nonconforming in the future to tie permits back, so...
Well, I don't mind that. I mean, if there, if the law required people to get a permit for a particular improvement in nineteen-eighty-five and they didn't, and they come in now for more, for a permit, and that's discovered, I think they should be held to the, having complied with the law at the time that was in effect.
Well, if in fact, that's the issue, I don't...
And that's how we typically treat any application. We recently had a, someone come by asking about a restaurant and a bunch of illegal additions that were done there. He said, "As, if we bring, if you're going to do improvements to this, when we bring it to Planning Commission, everything has to become legal." So, I mean, that's typical process for development.
Yeah, if they come in for a lot line adjustment, they can't have any violations on their property.
Wait, so if they, I guess, if they had, well, how would they have done it unless they didn't go through our permitting process, not having a coastal development permit?
Yeah, I mean, well, they just built it, is what...
Well, then that would have been illegal, right? We wouldn't allow that. Yeah, so there should have been a permit. The coastal development permit is a whole different thing to me than if they had an illegally-built structure or something that was outside of our permit process, then I'm on board, but... Yeah, I'd be curious to see what our attorney has to say about...
I'll make, I'll have them review it, just to make sure we're not missing anything. But this will, I don't think it hurts us at this point. It's when you start talking about nonconformities and they do calculations, that you're going to see the same language. But here, it's not referencing what you can do to improve your property to a certain extent with a nonconformity, so... Move on? But the one change is "may" at the end, "may require a CDP." Next, for thirteen, it's page forty-four-seventeen. This is from Coastal Commission staff. And they, as we spoke on about the first item, they do not want chapter seventeen-point-one-one-two included in our LCP. So, to not include that, they're asking...
Point-one-two-oh or point-one?
That we keep one-two-oh in, in this chapter. So, my suggestion is I'll go through it and make sure it's consistent with our chapter. One-twelve, make sure it matches exactly, and then I think it's okay to accept that change.
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine.
Being heads noted, okay. Fourteen is floor area ratio and garage exception. So, this, we had gotten into quite some detail. Mr. Shamsheuan was here at the last hearing and talking about the new two-hundred-and-fifty square foot exception for garages that were added to lots over three thousand square feet. Went back, this actually came up in our issues and options update. When we first kicked off the zoning code update, we highlighted some issues, and in talking about our floor area, it was suggested to add an exception for garages on small lots. I, there was no reference to why three thousand square feet. As we broke down the calculations of what the three thousand square feet would mean, well, first I'll talk to the slide. This creates a discrepancy between a lot that's three thousand square feet in size up to a lot that's about thirty-four, fifty, that they're getting more, more of a benefit on a lot that's smaller than a larger lot. So, the request was for the Planning Commission to look at this discrepancy and try to fix it so it's fair. And Mr. Shamsheuan was asking, "Rather than give this two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot exception for lots less than three thousand square feet, why doesn't the Planning Commission consider a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot exception to garages?" For, and that would, that request would make all homes larger within Capitola by one-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, no matter how you dice it. So, in trying to figure out where the... So, um, in trying to figure out where the 250 square feet came from, we figured out that, um, for a lot size of 2,587 square feet, the floor area, the max floor area gets you to the point that you're required to have a covered parking space. We think the 250-square-foot exception may have been, um, a way in which to, um, a, a property owner that's not required to have covered parking, to entice them to create a garage on their lot. So, um, what staff would suggest to fix this would be to create a, um, an exception for lots up to 200, 2,586 square feet in lot size to receive this 250-square-foot exception so they could build a garage on their lot. And then to create a plateau that goes across and identify, um, that home, that lots up to 3,018 square feet could have this garage area exception to also get that floor area established at 1,750 square feet. So to go back, if you have a lot that doesn't have to have covered parking, you'd be able to get the 250-square-foot exemption, but then we'd carry that across that seven, 1,750-square-foot floor area. We'd carry it across until you get to a, the lot size that it evens it out. So it makes it a fair process for people and nobody gets an, an advantage unless... Do you wanna talk about that before I go into?
I'll jump in here.
Okay.
I, I just wanna say I thought that was a very astute analysis, and I'm, I'm in awe of how you solved this problem. I really, I mean, I, I've studied it and I, you know, I was trying to think of how to, how to deal with it, and, uh, you came up with a great solution. I don't know if I like it. Well, I...
I, I don't like that it's not a rounded-off number.
No, I know, but it...
I can't stand that.
There's logic to it, though.
There's logic.
You started with the policies and the reasons and built from that, and, and it just made a lot of sense. So did you, so I, I don't like it for several reasons. First of all, it's, um, it's changing what the City Council approved, right? Isn't this, this is, the blue line is what the City Council...
And it was the City Council, wasn't the Planning Commission.
It was the City Council.
Yeah.
Right, so the Supreme Court made the ruling.
Yeah.
And they have created the blue line. So once again, the Planning Commission is trying to come back as a lower court and overrule
Fix it.
the Supreme Court. So I don't like the idea of, of that, trying, it seems like a slippery slope if we're gonna start revisiting all the zoning code issues and, and saying, oh, I'm sorry, City Council, you're wrong. Um, I also don't like it because the person who brought it up, Mr. Shamsheuan, was probably not interested in tightening the requirements, but loosening them. And, uh, this obviously makes it tougher. Uh, and I don't know, again, what the City Council, their intention was to give some relief, and you're saying, no, you shouldn't give as much relief. From what I read in your notes, you didn't get a, a real explanation of who on the City Council or what their rationale was, and you just tried to guess what it was. But perhaps there's legitimate reasons, and, and I would hate to see public outrage because there's people who fit in that little triangle there, and that all of a sudden now they're not, they're not in compliance. So, um...
This is not yet...
The fact that it's not, it's, the fact that it's, uh, it's a sharp edge, according to our, uh, our capability as Planning Commissioner, there seems to be enough wiggle room when we, when we talk about, uh, when variances are allowed, that if someone was to be right on the 3,001 foot or whatever, we would say, well, okay, this is an arbitrary number.
Some of us are harder on variances than others.
Well, but there's rationale and the, and the reason for variances. I mean, you could argue that you don't wanna give it anyway, but there's rationale to, to, to allow the borderline cases, especially since it's a fairly arbitrary limit. So my suggestion was to leave it alone. Thanks for the, uh, research. Got a lot of good information, but I don't wanna change it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the change. I, I, I think, um, the City Council, in all their infinite wisdom, sometimes has oversight, but they get a look at this again. It's not, so this goes to them, uh, after it leaves us. So they get a second chance to maybe review some oversights. So I don't, I, I really don't have an issue either way, to be honest with you, but...
I like Ed's suggestion from the last meeting. Don't allow for any ancillary space, just leave it up to the FAR.
Yeah.
That seems the simplest way.
You know, I think the one thing, and, and I understand the gentleman who brought it to us was trying to resolve the issue without making his wife upset, so... But having said that, the comment about making garages more accessible is legitimate in Capitola.
Well, you're a garage person, we, we've heard, heard that before.
That, that's a great, great lead into the next question. So my, is there support for
So?
the plateau?
So, there's some people in favor of the staff recommendation. There's some people in favor of leaving it the way it is. There's some people in favor so far of deleting all garage, uh, yeah, bonus, uh, the garage bonus completely. And, uh, Commissioner, Chairman, I'm not sure, you were, which way?
I'm okay with the staff recommendation.
Okay, so we got two for the, two out of four for the staff recommendation.
Okay, well, I'll capitulate on that.
All right.
I prefer the other way, but, uh...
Well, it's not unanimous.
No. We got a, a one reluctant yes and one dissent.
Okay, well, and we've got one more part of this to discuss. So the ancillary space, uh, I think there was quite an emphasis on the need in Capitola of ancillary space within a garage, because our standard would only allow the 10-by-20 area within a garage not to be counted towards the floor area ratio that's counted towards the parking. So I do think that to create a benefit for ancillary space within garages, it would be appropriate for the floor area ratio, which you use to calculate parking requirement, to allow an ancillary space of up to 125 square feet that doesn't count towards your parking requirement. It counts towards the floor area of the home, the max floor area.
Towards the...
But it wouldn't count in the calculation of parking. So people could have that flexibility to decide.
And oddly enough, we've been at this point where that 125 would've made a difference. It, it sounds crazy, but we've actually had that.
Yeah.
Where it requires that extra parking spot that people don't have, so...
Well, I think, I mean, when I said I, I liked what the staff had done, I included that. I, I like that also. And also, I mean, the, the trend is to reduce parking requirements. So this helps, uh, you know, that's, that's the modern planning, cause, you know, we're trying to get a little bit away from...
Having four-car garages.
Having four cars in every...
At least we're not talking about carbon footprint.
So agreement on ancillary space?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Okay, uh, page fifty-six dash one, there was a question related to, um, the deletion of, when an archaeological or paleontological survey is, report is required. And the first note was for, it's required as shown in the Capitola resource map of the LCP. And we had that recreated in the zoning code update. And the reason why this is crossed out is pretty much the whole village, half a depot hill, uh, the areas going up the Soquel Creek. It, it's just, this map shows where they may be, but it's not, um, any exact science to it. So to require all these properties to have, to create a report, we thought would be unfair. And it was actually the Coastal Commission staff that said, that's too broad, let's get rid of it. So the standards without one, um, would include, and there used to be within 750 feet, but it's property within a known archaeological or paleontological resources. So, and a property within 100 feet of the bluff, or an area with a probability of containing archaeological/paleontological resources as determined through the city's onsite investigation or other available information. So if we're doing an EIR and something comes up, or if, um, it's a known site, we would have them do the study, or if it's along the bluff. Is that...
That was mine, yeah.
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay. Um, next was the question about decorative features and materials for a fence. The standard right now, beyond the six-foot height, you're allowed an additional two feet of lattice or other similar material that is at least 50% transparent. We get a lot of fence permits, and we like to see that you can see that there's some visibility through the fence. We don't do any type of, you know, there, there have been applications that come in with a double lattice, and you can't see through it, and we'll deny those. But if it were, there are a lot of new, uh, fence designs coming out these days. So if we wanted, I think the request was to consider lowering that to 30%?
Yeah. Just because I was, there's a lot of fences that use privacy lattice, which has...
The double.
Yeah, it's double, and the, the gaps are about this big between the, the strips of lattice, rather than like that.
Okay.
It just seems, that's a reasonable choice to allow.
Well, I think, the question is, do you want it, um, is, is privacy the goal, or is, um, being able to see through it the goal?
The, the, yeah, the, the privacy lattice, you can't see through.
Right.
So...
So I'm thinking of, uh, some of the houses, uh, you know, that, that are overlooking scenic views. And the lattice takes the fence up from, what, six feet to eight feet?
Right.
Which is, that's an important two feet there, if there's some kind of view through. I think that's part of the reason for it.
But wouldn't other parts of the zoning code apply to that with views and obstructing views?
Maybe.
Only for public views.
Well, by the way, where'd you get that graphic?
Online. Do you recognize it?
No, I'm just curious.
That's your typical one that comes in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be probably below obstruction.
Yeah, I'm, well, I, it's not that I'm a... You, you're saying you want the privacy lattice?
Yeah, I, I think the privacy...
We, we had a, we had an incident where the people wanted to raise their fence six inches because of a hot tub and had all the neighbors
Right.
agree, and we didn't allow him to raise his fence six inches. To me, it was like, it, I was the lone person there, cause it's like, hey, nobody wants to see the people in the hot tub. They don't want, why not, if everyone agrees, why don't we just give them a little courtesy and...
Rules are rules.
So, I, I...
Let's change the rules.
But we have an, we have an option to change the rules right now, so, um, I'm not opposed to it. And in a lot of these areas, you know, if you look like, uh, a butting against the railroad track or Park Avenue, it's, the extra two feet of lattice that becomes privacy doesn't, it's not obstructing views or anything else, so...
Doesn't hurt anything.
Yeah.
So I guess my only concern is this isn't a, a Coastal Commission concern, is it?
No, this is not a Coastal Commission.
So now we're... And didn't we, didn't the Planning Commission already approve the zoning code the way it's written? And we're just talking about the Coastal Commission comments? So now we're going back and re-reviewing what was already approved?
Yeah, that, that was, uh, that was part of it, but...
I, I agree with this notion. I'm just worried about the, the slippery slope of reopening issues that are already decided.
Evolution. I think you can do minor, cause you are new Planning Commission. You have that ability to do these updates, but...
Well, I think we should leave it the way it is.
I lost the first go-around, Mick, so I don't have an issue with it either way.
So, well, so I, so I wanna explore this evolution thing a little bit more. Again, my concern is, is that, again, cause I remember sitting there, and, and the, the last Planning Commission said, and, you know, Rich was really anxious to get this zoning code approved before the Planning Commission was still there, cause the new Planning Commission's gonna come in and start all over, and they're gonna review all this stuff, and we're gonna be back to square one, and we'll never get this thing approved.
That's the way it works.
So that's, that's what's in my mind, but now that I am that Planning Commissioner, I'm kinda feeling like, all right, I'll be one of those guys who's starting this whole thing over again. So I'm kinda, haha, on the fence as to whether or not to agree, uh, to this or not, so...
I just think you have to look at some design trends, trends. I think the, the design trends are more towards the privacy lattice than this old stuff that's been around for 20 or 30 years.
Well, you mean, I'm even, I'll, I'll go further than that. I think good fences make good neighbors, and so I just would increase it to eight feet, period, but, um, yeah. You know, I don't wanna...
There's ways around it. You can have a hedge next to your fence.
That's true, there's no regulation.
There's no regulation on it, so...
You want privacy.
That's right, there are ways around it.
I guess I'll, I'll go with the majority if there is one.
The, the previous code, I was thinking, I don't remember the 50% in the previous code. So the previous code states, um, that you can go up to a maximum height of eight feet provided that the top two feet of the fence made by lattice or other open material. So we didn't have a standard, so we could say similar material that is...
Well, I think the discussion was that lattice isn't always used for that upper two feet. There's other methods of doing that 50% type for design and stuff. And so I think that's why we got away from lattice or similar materials, but they still wanted the transparency, and the 50% was just what came up. Had Mick been on the Planning Commission at that time, which is a rare thing that you weren't, by the way?
I don't recall.
Yeah.
Well, I mean...
I went through.
There's something about having a, I mean, there's, there's a light in an air issue too, in, in some locations, where when you start getting your fences higher and higher and higher, it, it does impose on the neighboring properties. I think we should keep it the way it is.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that.
I was convinced there were other alternatives, so...
So we're, we're only, it's two hours into this. This is not like a hearing where you get kinda, I mean, this is hard work.
It is hard work.
I'm not seeing that we're gonna get, uh, to the end at any reasonable hour today.
Okay.
What do you mean, we're already at eighteen?
I'm okay with, yeah, you want to...
Fifteen, we've only got another page or so.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, we're almost...
Well, if you do, don't do it with edits, if you just go to the numbers we got.
Well, can you give us an idea of how many more items we have?
You're still gonna...
Uh, there's one big item, and then the, the rest are small. I think, um, there are, there's 20 total.
Twenty-eight more?
There are 20 total, and we're at 16. We're at 17.
No, I'll leave it to you guys. I mean, I don't, I, I lose, uh, effectiveness after a couple hours straight.
I'm with you. Hey, I've been, I've been looking at this thing all day. Can we go till, uh, well, let's go to nine o'clock and see where we're at on that, this next discussion, all right? It's only another five minutes, but this next one, you said's a big one, or is this the...
The Coastal Commission asked that we consider bringing this one back in. It's page seventy-six dash three. It's under the parking standards for the Central Village. They would like, um, the note to say, in the coastal zone, in all cases, hotel development shall provide adequate parking. I think up to that point, it's okay. But they also like, and shall not negatively impact existing public parking opportunities. And I don't think we should hold them to a higher standard. We discussed this at the last meeting, and I think there was consensus with that, so...
And this is one of those concerns I have about the Coastal Commission and some of the lawsuits, is that, and I don't know, I'd be interested to see what our legal people say on land use, but that, that they're trying to create policy force, and that's outside of their purview. And I think our code covers parking issue.
Okay, so we'll keep that struck in.
Well, this is where they're conflicting with, some of their own policies are conflicting, because you want visitor-serving use, which is the hotel is a visitor-serving use.
Right.
And then you're gonna put parking restrictions on it.
Yeah, and, and the site is a parking lot right now. So, and it has a more intense demand for parking than a hotel site would, cause it flips
Yeah, so in a way
probably three or four times a day.
It says no hotel, I mean...
Yeah, so... We'll move on to eighteen. This is actually kind of an in-depth one. This came up in our recent application on Monterey Avenue, and we had the standard in here. For this is within the mixed-use village zoning district. There's a requirement, um...
Did we skip 16?
We did, because it's accessory dwelling units, and it's big, and I thought I'd leave it for last. Because we may not have time for that one, but... Okay, so this one, we had kept the standard about mixed-use village, and that parking has to be outside, provided outside of the village. You know, in translating it from the old code to the new code, A was not translated in, and partially, I think, is because there was no reference to what a non-historic structure in residential areas bounding the central commercial district. We didn't... We didn't realize that that was tied to a land use plan map in Exhibit B. I think it's really great language to keep in the code because it specifies that along that commercial district, a nonhistoric structure should not, is not required to have onsite parking, that it should be offsite. And I think that supports exactly where the Public Works has gone with this for years and the, and the, it, it reflects what is stated in the land use plan. I think it might be better, though, if we even include a GIS image of this, of exactly what that, instead of referencing the land use plan Exhibit B, I think that maybe we should follow this with the map, which is this map from the land use plan. And what it's stating is that these areas of Capitola Avenue, just this commercial area along here that's not within one of the residential overlay districts, that their required parking can be provided outside the village.
So, we just handled that application and we were kind of wondering what, how to interpret that and I'm still-
It was conflicted, yeah.
And wondering if I have a property in that district, where am I supposed to go for the parking, to meet the parking requirement?
So you should, you should find your parking outside the village.
Buy a lot someplace?
So either getting like a deed restriction placed on another lot that has extra parking and having an agreement, or ideally, I think this was probably set up in a time when you could buy parking spaces through an in-look program, but we don't have that for residential.
We don't have that, so-
And the other, only other option then gives, is a variance.
So I, I mean, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Ruth, who's been here for a hundred years, whether he's ever seen anybody get a parking lot somewhere else to build a, a house.
Never, never.
Yeah, it, it just seems kind of bizarre to me.
I know that there was, further up Capitola Avenue, there, there was a neighbor who has, their parking requirement is on the neighboring property, I've heard of that story and it's, it's always referenced as really poor planning as well, because, but, for this, I mean, it's, I, that recent applicant said, do you have any family or-
Yeah, I mean-
You know, that's willing to give up a couple parking spaces elsewhere, because that's essentially-
Maybe find a new way to make money if you live outside the lot.
What are you gonna tell the first, first guy who comes in and says, you know, I want to remodel my house in this district? You say, well, you need to go outside and find somewhere, buy a parking lot.
Or else you can only build a ten percent addition and that's why the village hasn't really grown, because-
Okay.
But anyway, I think keeping it in help, is helpful.
Alright.
Because it's required under the land use plan and it just, it gives, puts words into a process that's definitely supported without doing additional curb cuts.
You're bringing up a, a good point, though, is this something that we should put on an agenda item to relook at this whole, I mean, it's crazy, right?
Yeah, it conflicts, it can't-
I'm just not sure how significant it is. I mean, we've had, we did have one application, but-
Yeah, well-
One more.
You're about to have one next month, too.
We're gonna get another one, two of your three hearings.
But we've gone through-
There you go, like, that happens all the time, as far as I'm concerned.
So where Fanmar hits Capitola Avenue, there's the cute house in the corner and then the property next to it, which recently sold, that's the other vacant lot in the village that they'll come in for an application on that lot, they're required to provide parking on an, outside the village.
Why don't they just make it a parking lot and sell it to the other people that are looking for parking?
And, when they came in, they met with staff and in reviewing this with the Public Works Director, it was decided we should, we should direct them towards the least impactful land use regarding parking and then they would need a variance. So the least impactful is to build a home up to fifteen hundred square feet-
Two thousand.
Or two thousand square feet that only requires two parking spaces.
That's like a real workaround, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can put this on an agenda for-
If we had an in-look program, it would make sense.
It would.
Yeah.
Continue the discussion on that one?
I, maybe so, I don't know that, it'd be nice to have an answer, it'd be nice to have an answer for people, I don't, I think we're kinda kicking the can down the road by saying, well.
Um, next was, well, it is past nine o'clock, do you wanna?
How many, where are we at, we're on nineteen?
And she skipped sixteen, so.
Yeah, that's a big one, though, sixteen's a-
And then how, would you have, on the next page, which ones do we need to discuss?
So nineteen and then, nineteen is just to, for findings and then twenty, the, oh, development?
Oh, that's my thing.
Well, I didn't see this Capitola Theater Development, we talked about that and we were pushing back on the coastal commission about height requirements and ten feet below versus-
We, we already agreed to that, though, right?
Yeah, we've already worked that one out at the last meeting, the planning commission said to just leave it as we had it.
What did the coastal commission say, did you talk to them about that? I'm sorry, I'm off topic, never mind. No, that's a good point. Did they accept what we did?
You know, we won't know until, the, the staff definitely, they, they would prefer to have a firm number in there, but they understand where we're coming from, so we'll see what the coastal commission actually says beyond their staff on that one. Okay, so nineteen, findings for historic demolition, that the comment I believe was made by Commissioner Newman, that for the findings, one through four-
Yeah.
That-
Oh, yeah.
One or more of the first four findings should be made, but then always the fifth finding would have to be made, so I can just make that simple edit.
Yeah, that's structural.
Okay.
That's fine.
Twenty is the definition of development. And there is, one thing I want to be really clear about is the coastal, there's a coastal act definition of development and that's gonna be in seventeen four four, so this is for our definition of development and then there'll be a reference to the seventeen four four oh three oh. And so development means a, any, and then I said, proposed change to land or structure, crossing out human caused.
Right.
Land or structure that requires a permit or approval from the city, including construction, rehabilitation and reconstruction.
I like that.
I like that.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then, do you want me to get into this last item? It's, it's pretty much to make our ADU ordinance.
The number is at sixteen?
I'll defer to my-
Sixteen, it's chapter seventy-four, and I can highlight the state changes to it. Our next planning commission meeting, we have quite a few items on there, including like two larger developments, so it may be best to just take fifteen minutes on this. Okay, so, the big thing from the state is that you have to set up an administrative review and our prior ordinance, it had an administrative review, but then we had lots of references to deviation to standards and for like decreased setbacks, unit size, open space, two stories and height exceptions, and they were built in throughout the ordinance. We modified that to have all of the administrative review upfront in the ordinance and then a discretionary for deviations from the standards put towards the end of the ordinance in which, if you're gonna deviate from these standards, you then have to go to planning commission and certain findings have to be met. So that was structural. Second was minimum lot size, for an attached ADU, so, does everyone understand the difference between attached, detached and internal? So, the, an attached ADU, the minimum lot size has been five thousand square feet, detached ADU, the minimum lot size is five thousand square feet. Our previous code said internal ADU, we would allow a four thousand square foot minimum lot size and that's for a unit that's either within the home or within the exist, an existing accessory structure, so the pool house can be converted to an ADU. The state came back-
So not your, the coastal commission, so our code currently meets the state's requirements for, oh, no, this is after the state came in?
So this is, this is actually-
So it's not the coastal, we're talking about state now, okay?
This is not a coastal issue, this is a-
State.
Total zoning code issue.
This is, there was, total zoning code issue, so our, our new ordinance that we adopted in January of twenty eighteen, actually, the law that went into place in January of twenty eighteen, we thought we were in compliance with it, but what took effect is not, we, we need to make some-
So why do we have to discuss this, we have to comply?
It's state, it's state, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any-
Well, there, I want to tell you the shocking things.
Oh, okay.
When I say I approved an ADU, you're not surprised. So one thing, this is kinda unsubstantial, but for the really small internal ADUs, the maximum size is tied to either fifty percent of the existing structure or five hundred square feet, whichever is less, that's minor.
Whichever is less?
Whichever is less, so.
But that does allow now ADUs on all lots, if it's internal, so that's a big change, because before on sub four thousand, you just couldn't and that caused a lot of people stress.
Right.
So, yeah, I think I have a slide on that, but to this point, the, the internal ADU under scenario three, so it's either within the existing home or in an existing accessory structure, the state says if you're a single-family home on a R1 lot, a single-family lot, we have no, we cannot set a lot size standard for that. So, any single-family home in an R1 lot can have an internal ADU, they can convert part of their existing home or they can convert part of the existing accessory structure. That's the biggest change in all of this.
What does that mean, like you could, put in a second kitchen, what is an internal?
Yeah, you'd put in a second kitchen and you'd have separate sleeping quarters and a dividing door, so essentially, it's a second unit that has its own access.
They're all over Capitola and have been for many years.
Just not legally.
Now they're gonna be legal.
So when people come to the front counter, we often turn them away because their lot size isn't big enough, now it's, okay, you're in the R1 and you have an existing home, as long as it's within the existing home, you can build it.
That's you.
The trick is, so now we have this other thing of maximum floor area ratio, when you have an ADU, your maximum floor area ratio goes up to a point six. In the, under our floor area ratio, it says, the combined floor area for a lot with a primary residence and an accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed six, that's in a, in the citywide standards. Then I found in the R1 standard, we say, in the R1 parcels of four thousand square feet or more with an approved ADU are permitted a maximum floor area of point six. Tonight I'd like to note, do you want that to apply to all lot sizes? Should we have the minimum of four thousand square feet and larger that you get an increased It might seem-
I just look at the jewel box where I live and those houses now are crammed so close together to allow it on lots less than four thousand square feet, would just really impact that neighborhood if it were to-
If they were to get a larger home size?
Yeah.
Okay.
But larger than four thousand square feet, I don't know that I have a-
So what does the state require, that say put the point six?
So this isn't state, this is, I'm finding a discrepancy, so in our R1 section of code, it says that as long as, for, for a lot that has an ADU on it and it's four thousand square feet or larger, you get this point six. We see point six, we see people bump up their house size regularly in a lot of applications, so a lot of people take advantage of this and put a secondary unit in. Do we want to decrease that four thousand square foot?
So that the FAR can go up?
Yeah, so that, you know, now that we know that ADUs can happen on a three thousand five hundred square foot lot, do they also get the privilege of a floor area?
Higher two, higher FAR.
Yeah, and I wish, I don't have the breakdown of FAR, but it starts getting closer because the smaller the lot, the higher the FAR.
Right.
Between four-
Here, let's-
Four percent would be the most someone could get.
Yeah.
Five percent, sorry.
It's hard to know how this really plays out in the real world.
Four thousand feet is fifty-four percent.
I think it plays out to be like within a hundred square feet or so, once you're on a smaller lot, but the, I know Matt's gone through a lot of these.
So, the people are gonna come in now and with a little bit bigger building plan because they say that they're gonna have an internal ADU, which they may or may not end up having.
They do have to de-restrict it, though.
Yeah. Well, it'll be, it'll be, there'll be a building inspector, right, looking for two kitchens and the dividing wall and the door and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Then-
Separate entrances.
They could just change it. An extra bedroom for a family.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's kind of a way to get a little bit more space.
Two forty is the most someone could get out of that, if they had like a three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square foot lot, the most they could add, with the sixty percent would be an extra two hundred and forty square feet. And then the smaller lots would taper off down to zero.
But even thirty-nine hundred ninety-nine square feet is a large lot for Capitola. Most of them are thirty-two hundred square feet.
Thirty-two hundred in the jewel box, yeah.
And you are seeing now people on even like really big lots only adding like the most minimal ADUs just to get to that sixty percent, so I mean, people use this a lot.
Yeah. It's, it's got a lot of potential for abuse. I'd say we leave it at the way it is.
The four thousand, okay, we're gonna clean it up then, so it's clear in both sections. This I just went over with, well, okay, so an internal ADU is inside the home.
And the state controls that?
The state controls that, they, oh, sorry.
Well, I, I think the other thing that is a consideration is also controls parking, so we can't ask for more parking, so that's, if you allow the larger ADU, they're gonna shove two families in there and more parking and-
But even as it is, every house in Capitola could be converted to a duplex.
Right, just a-
Sorry, Sam.
In the R1, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like I did do a calculation of a three thousand square foot lot, the FAR would be fifty, point five seven, if, if we're allowed, if we're gonna allow a three thousand square foot lot to have an FAR of sixty, they would get an extra ninety square feet. So their FAR would go from seventeen ten up to eighteen hundred, so, but we'll leave it, I heard, leave it at four thousand. And, so this, okay, this slide was to show you, we have this chicken before the egg thing happening in Capitola, that people are coming in and realizing that they can get an internal ADU, but it has to be within the existing building and then-
They're doing an addition.
So they're coming in asking all these great ADU questions and they can do the internal addition and then the next day they can come, once it's done and it's finalized, they can say, well, I have an ADU, so I get my increased FAR of point six, so now I want to do an addition off the back. And we're just, we're looking at this saying, wow, this is really a lot of bureaucracy and if the planning commission wants, we can draft this in such a way that on a four thousand square foot lot, if you're going to have an internal ADU, you can also build an addition at the same time, just to not have to do this two-step development process, which the purpose here really is to create more housing, so.
Yeah, it is, it's, they're related, the addition is definitely related to, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, so we're gonna get rid of the chicken and the egg thing, that's great. The other part of the state law is that they created all of these new exceptions for parking and when I go through the exceptions for parking, the only time we can require parking for an ADU is if it's a detached ADU. So if it's this detached building, that's the only scenario, if it's with, all the other scenarios, it's-
Internal or attached?
Yeah, so only a detached building. The other thing to note is that conversion within an existing garage, carport or covered parking, folks are allowed to convert their garages to ADUs.
They'll use that extra hundred and twenty-five or two hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah, and then, the existing square footage for the primary home, though, has to be provided onsite and then the state goes so far to say the required parking spaces may be located in- may be located in any configuration on the same lot as the accessory dwelling unit, including but not limited to covered spaces, uncovered spaces. So our whole, all our regulations about covered go out the door. Tandem spaces or by the use of mechanical automobile parking lifts. So that's in there. So as we're seeing, we're going to start to see garages get converted and parking taking up other areas. The accessory dwelling unit within the converted garage does not require onsite parking. That's the other part of it. So there's an exception to the parking that you've just, you know, that new unit.
So we have restrictions on parking in the front yard landscaped area? Will that remain?
No, this is, it's.
I think it allows anything in this one.
Yeah.
The required off-street parking for the existing single-family home shall be provided onsite based on the floor area of the existing structure of the parcel. The required parking spaces may be located in any configuration on the same lot as the accessory dwelling unit, including but not limited to. So it sounds like, no, they can be in the front yard.
There goes our, yeah, landscaping requirement.
I mean, we still have like, that one, I'll push back on that for our attorney. But I know Matt and I have.
Matt creates a different neighborhood when everyone has a car right in front of their house where their front yard should be.
You have one of those coming next month, too. I request for that.
So that's it. That was all the changes we made it through. Would you like me to, because of that, the village discussion, it really is tied to INLU. We could just bring that to City Council and say, we don't, you know, with, do you want to open up the INLU policy or?
It's, it's going to be their issue anyway.
It really is an INLU issue or it needs to be changed. So it's more of a policy discussion. If you'd like, I could take everything I've heard. I'll bring it back to you in the form of minutes. And with that one item, we could ask the City Council for advice on the INLU.
I don't know where the City Council is on the whole INLU that has a history, but it's not been around for a long time here.
You have a new group.
Money all went away and, I mean, so they haven't taken that up. And it's not, it's not a small subject when they get into it, figuring it all out.
Would you like another shot at it at the next hearing? Or would you like me to?
To me, it's going to go to them and they're going to do what they want to do, so.
We have a big agenda.
You do? Okay, well, thank you.
We, do we need to approve this or just accept it and move it to the City Council?
You need to have a motion in support of the
Okay.
modifications as directed by Planning Commission in the past two meetings. And I'll have those summarized for you.
Okay, so we can ask for that motion and then further discussion because.
You didn't say anything about duck quacking, did you? Your syndrome.
That's okay, we just start looking around. That was good. So we can have a motion to accept that and then have that forwarded to the City Council. And then I have a concern and I can't make a motion, but a discussion, maybe just what the rest of our planning commissioners think about having some open community forums for some of this stuff coming up on with the Coastal Commission's concerns. And that was recommended by, the other cities I talked to, that they were threatened by lawsuits and finally, and they backwalked it and said, the recommendation from the people I spoke to in the other cities was, take your time, don't, don't try to rush this thing through because a lot of people have some concerns. And they ended up in litigation and. So would it be, you think appropriate to ask the City Council with this review is to have some community forums on, especially the geological component of the.
Which we haven't addressed yet, right?
Right.
Yeah, if I may, so the purpose for keeping geological hazards out and non-conforming is there's two things going on. The Coastal Commission is still working and working through the application of those in different areas. Right now, the city of Santa Cruz, or the county of Santa Cruz is updating their hazards section. That should be published, I believe, tomorrow. And staff recognizes that once we start going through the hazards and the non-conforming, the changes that are in these policy documents are going to take a lot of public outreach. They require a lot of public outreach. They're very, they're asking for things that our residents have not had to consider in the past. And so that is why we're doing this two-step approach is so that we do slow down for those highly controversial items. And at the same time, hopefully, the Coastal Commission, in working with other jurisdictions on this, is making some progress towards more amenable standards, but.
I think, well, and I guess my question is, do, can we make at least a public statement so people know that they're going to have an opportunity to have this opportunity through the public outreach to have their concerns addressed? Most, most people have already, they don't even know what we're doing right now with this Coastal Commission.
So a lot of this is very detailed that would be hard to, yeah, but there may be some big issues that that would be a good idea to, you know, if we get, if we end up in disagreement with the Coastal Commission on a major policy issue.
Right.
And that would be something, but to try to bring this kind of detail.
No, this detail, I understand, but I just, I was just thinking that if we had a statement that we're going to have a time for public comment and some community outreach before we address all these other concerns. And one of it, it just, first, we need to notice those people that are affected, which is a large, large part of our community. And then secondly, is having someone that can interpret that because it, it gets, it gets pretty complicated. There's a lot of information here that, and so, and I think the Coastal Commission needs to be part of that public outreach so they can answer the questions and the concerns. And I just want to go on the record, I guess, stating that we're, we plan on using that process so that people who are watching or hearing about this, that they know that we're not just trying to backdoor the, some of these changes. So that's my concern. With that, I'll leave it open for a motion.
What was the motion we need to make?
A positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, so move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any director's report tonight?
No director's report, just as a follow-up to your comment. I'll make sure in the City Council staff report that I echo those comments of emphasizing future work will be done in public outreach.
Thank you. Planning Commissioner comments?
None.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll send it to you. This is some lawsuits that are going on.
That was just a statement, what about the?
Really affecting it. Maybe I'll send it to Katie.